United States of America to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our meeting, March 26th, Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Any questions? No? Okay. All in favor? Mr. Ririck?
Leaves retirements, high school arts, Sue Lynch, appointments to permanent coaching positions, Josh Mello, and Keith Corey. Excuse me. Couldn't read my writing.
Okay. Thank you. School policy development.
We don't have any.
Oh, that's right. Okay. That's nothing. That was last time. Okay. Can we move that up, Carol?
Yes, I'd like to move up item 7C, the Pecassid school drainage issue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Ririck?
Yes. At our March walkthrough at Pecassid School, several members of the Budget Committee, Mrs. Black from the school committee was able to attend, as well as a couple of residents who wanted to take a tour of Pecassid. We took the tour, and one of the residents, Mr. Jim Odell, asked if he could see the parking area at Pecassid because he heard there was an issue with the drainage. And we took the group out and showed everybody what it looked like because there was water had backed up. I just gave pictures to the committee. Mr. Larkin is new to the committee and hasn't seen these before, but this is pretty much what it looks like. One view is looking towards the softball field, the playing fields, and the other view is looking towards Main Road from the parking lot. And as you can see in these pictures, the water, at this case, was equal to the curb level, and there have been times when the water has backed up and has gone over the curb and run up against the building itself. Mr. Odell, when we were doing our tour, as well as a couple of, one council member and two?
Two.
Two council members.
Yeah. Mr. Aruda and Mrs. Shabbat.
Right. Both asked about it, and I told them the reason for the backup was when this was originally built, and for those, for the committee that has the pictures, there was a natural swale built in that ran from the parking area behind where the dumpster is now, and the water would just naturally drain. Now, as you can tell, these fields were here before the construction, and the fields themselves are below grade. So whenever it rains very heavily, both the baseball field in the back and on the softball field, water builds up in certain parts of the infield like it does on many baseball fields. To make a long story short, back in 2011, without our permission, it happened over the weekend, the town filled in this drainage swale and poured cement because they had complaints from residents that they believed the water from the parking lot was running into the softball field. And our position was that it was just natural water. It would have been there anyway. It wasn't from us. Well, again, without our permission, they put this in, and it's been like this since 2011. I have a, and again, we went through this a year or so ago, I have the emails that I communicated with the town administrator from the very beginning when this happened. I sent him two letters over the summer of 2011, trying to get this issue resolved. When I brought it to the committee's attention at the time, we were engaged in a legal dispute over the money, and at that time, we felt we should focus on that and not address this. This has come back up. Mr. Odell is here, and he was very upset by what he saw, and I think he wants to speak to the committee regarding his concerns. And I know he went to the council last night and asked that the council pick up half the cost for doing the work to fix it. We had, actually, Mr. Odell took the initiative, asked a local contractor just to come, give an estimate, what would it cost to fix this? And I believe you have the estimate there. It's around $14,000. Even though we didn't create it, I thought it was a good idea when Mr. Odell talked to me about it earlier in the month, to try to get this resolved with the town, have them pick up half, we pick up the other half, and the matter's resolved, even though we weren't, we didn't create this. But in order to move forward, I thought it would be a good step in the right direction.
So what's the fix? Drain your water towards Main Road?
The fix, no. The fix is to take a pipe, put a drain in here, drain the water, and then drain it all the way out past the softball field into, under, I'll let Mr. Odell explain it because he was there, but you would, the water would be run towards the field and then go into a drain and then drain out.
Here's our picture if you will.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. As Mr. Ririck said, Mr. Sousa and myself and several members of the Budget Committee, two members of the council, we went for the tour. Upset's an understatement. When I saw this, the first thing that ran through my head was a small child tripping up sidewalk and doing a header into this driveway. There's evidence on the foundation that there's mineralization, which means water has sat against the foundation for a significant amount of time. It's already undermining your driveway. It's a matter of time before it'll undermine the sidewalk as well. It will do permanent damage to the foundation. To me, it's a significant liability issue, and I have no idea how it's been like this this long. This is just, I mean, I've heard about this issue, which is why I went on the tour. It absolutely blows me away that somebody would come in and undermine a $10 million investment to keep water off of grass. It's ridiculous.
So where would the pipe go? Can you use that picture?
The 12-inch, from this picture, the area where the water is deepest, which is behind the structure, the drain line, the drain line would start at that point. Mr. Rose suggested a six-foot catch basin drainage. The reason for six feet is because he's pretty certain there's ledge in that entire area. He wanted to go 10 feet because of the amount of water. To run 270 feet, a 12-inch line, which is significant enough, it's, it has to be that large because of the amount of water. He guarantees the result. He's a drain man for 50 years in this area. He knows more about the topography here than anyone I know.
So does the pipe go along that fence?
The pipe would go, the pipe would go along the fence.
Like, hold the picture up and show me where.
Yes, yes.
I'm visual.
Okay. The drain would actually run along the fence line, as close to the fence line as possible, behind the concession stand and beyond, and then it would drain into what's called riprap, which is basically a lot of stone to create a drainage, a drainage facility.
Underground.
It would let the water, it would let the water run down. The pipe itself would be very close to the surface because of the pitch of the area. It goes down significantly there. So if you're starting at six feet deep at the parking lot, you're going to be virtually at ground level by the time it gets to the end of the 270 feet.
But he felt confident it wouldn't cause problems with where the field with having to have a berm or anything that they have to walk over.
Oh, no. There'd be nothing like that. The pipe itself is totally underground, unlike Mr. Berlucci's idea of, I believe Mr. Sousa said his first idea was to actually put a trough trench. To me, that's a, that's a more significant liability than the water because every, every child is going to want to walk in it and look at it and trip on it.
Of course.
To me, that's, to me, that's worse than what we have now. I mean, if it can be done, if it can be done, as Mr. Berlucci says, above ground, I would absolutely insist that it be enclosed drain pipe and not a trough or anything that would be a tripping hazard to small children. I mean, we're not talking about high school kids. We're talking about small children.
But, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is school property. We decide.
We decide, we control, part of the issue is we control the right to the fence. That's us.
Oh, okay.
To go farther is the town.
Okay. That's why.
And that's part of the, that's where, even though we're one, and it's really how we should look at it, is we have a town issue.
Well, no, yeah. Who gets to make the ultimate?
But, but going back to the whole issue is, is will the town allow us, even if, we have every right to break up that cement block. We could do that.
But will this do it without breaking up that?
No. I mean, the block.
The block can, the dam, the dam structure they installed can be eliminated when the drain is put in because the water will no longer run on top of the ground.
Is that what Mr. Rose is recommending?
Yes, yes. He shook his head and laughed hysterically when he saw the dam. He's never seen anything like it. He called it irresponsible, was his word.
Now, and again, going back to the plans, and this is back and forth, and I've got all the documentation with the town administrator, you know, he says it's the, when the plans were faulty. Well, the plans were approved by the zoning board and the planning board, and as Mr. Odell said, it's a, it's close to a $10 million project, and this was all part of the project. So no one on the town side, when we put it in, had an issue with it. And I, my issue was that because, if you've ever been over there, it's a significant drop.
Yes.
The field itself.
Yes.
When we didn't touch the field, and when you're below grade, and infield's are flat, softball fields, baseball infield's are flat, except for the pitcher's mound of baseball. So the water really has nowhere to go, and these fields don't have drainage like Fenway Park or whatever. So the water, believe me, I know, my daughter played softball on this field, and I'm well aware of all that, all those problems. Our position at the time was, that's just natural rain. It has nothing to do with us. We had heavy rain, you know, the year before, and the town administrator said that, well, you guys didn't do anything about it. Well, we didn't do anything about it because our position was, you know, we weren't causing it. With that said, it literally happened, is Mrs. Blaze here?
Yeah.
She called me on a Monday morning and said someone poured cement over the weekend.
And then they called me to go look at it, and I just couldn't believe my eyes.
So the question is.
Well, I, yeah, I think at this point, what's been done, it's been done.
Right. The question is how do we proceed?
I think Mr. Odell's point is very well taken, is we're causing damage to the infrastructure now, and it just needs to be fixed.
And not to mention that it is frowned upon in the construction field to build a dam, period, or to build up property within 30 feet of a property line. It's generally frowned upon, and in most municipalities, it's an illegal practice. You're not allowed to build up your lot at a property line.
So where are we, Mr. Odell? I wasn't at the meeting last night.
Yes.
So are, is Mr. Rose's suggestion, was that okay with the council?
I believe that, I believe that we had substantial council support for it. The issue is, and I had told Mr. Ririck this, I had discussions last Friday. I took Friday off. I spent two hours trying to convince Mr. Goncalo that this is something that needs to be solved sooner than later, and all I kept getting was, it's the contractor's fault, it's the contractor's fault. And my question to Mr. Goncalo, which he could not answer, is, anytime in the state of Rhode Island, a job exceeds $500,000, it's mandatory and the law to have a PIB, which is a performance bond. If things are not done to spec, the contractor doesn't get the final payment.
That's correct.
So, so this drainage that was suggested and implemented, it had to be approved.
Was deemed approved.
If it, if it was not approved, the pay, the performance bond would not have been paid.
That's correct. That's correct.
Which drainage?
When they built the school.
The original, the original.
Not building the dam.
No, no.
No, when we did the work, because we had to do significant work to the site, and what Mr. Odell's talking about is each school was bonded, and the contractor had to bond the project.
What's super aggravating, then, in this, I will use this word, petty town, people argue about stupid $1,800, $18,000, whose fault it is.
Exactly.
When we are talking about protecting the investment here, which if, if this, just leave it, and then we will ask those $300,000 to fix the foundation.
That's exactly what I told Mr. Goncalo, and that's exactly what I said last night. I said, look, if it makes you feel better, Mr. Goncalo, blame me for it. Okay? Now, let's fix it.
And I appreciate.
Let's fix it while it's $14,000 or maybe a little less.
And I appreciate, Mr. Odell, that your compromise really was a compromise. Why don't you just both pay half?
Right.
That's right. Well, I thought, I thought.
It was fair.
I thought it would go ways towards town and school unity.
Full sets.
Sure.
Although my personal belief is the town caused the issue, I think the town should pay the whole thing.
But still.
However, in talking to Mr. Ririck, we thought it would be a reasonable, very reasonable to have, just to have it fixed while it's still a minor fix.
So that nobody has to.
Yes, sir.
Jim, could you just tell, because I wasn't there either, could you just tell the committee how it end, you know, where it's?
Last night, the final result, after the, after I said what I had to say, and Mr. Berlucci said what he had to say, and I rebutted it, what was finally done by the council, my understanding was, they voted and accepted the following, that Mr. Goncalo is supposed to contact Mr. Ririck ASAP to try to come up with a resolution or a reasonable solution in a very short period of time. Spring rain's coming. It's going to be a disaster if it's still like this. And that in the meantime, Mr. Berlucci is supposed to look at it, report back with his findings, but he's also supposed to alleviate the emergency situation, which I asked Mr. Berlucci about last night on my way out. I asked him if he was planning to put a, to put a passway through that dam temporarily so it will not further undermine the school. He said he's stuck on that with the quote-unquote "stuck on that" with the recreation department as well as the town administrator, which I responded to by saying, you're stuck, I'm not. If Mr. Ririck says do it, I'm going to punch a hole in it so it doesn't make the school worse at my own expense.
And then there was a question of if it had to go out to bid, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Now, if it's an emergency situation, my understanding of contract law, if it's deemed an emergency situation, it does not have to go out to bid, it does not have to be prevailing wage. Under an emergency situation, whoever can do the job correctly and right now can do the job. But if you do punch a hole in the dam to alleviate the emergency situation, then it does have to go out to bid and prevailing wage, et cetera. To me, I just don't want further damage to the school. At any time, that concrete of those sidewalks can be undermined. The good thing is concrete is more solid than asphalt.
I don't think.
The driveway's already undermined slightly.
Well, and certainly the safety and blocking the egress when it starts going up over.
Absolutely. Kids getting off and on the bus and.
Right. How does, how does anybody get from their parking, parked car in the lot into the building without getting way through ankle-high water?
My wife was afraid to drive through this.
It's pretty deep.
It was, it was higher than that. It was, and it was four days since it rained. The rain was the previous Wednesday. We went there on Saturday. There was eight inches of water in this driveway, which means four days earlier, it was probably up on the foundation.
And you could see the high-water mark.
You can. There's mineralization on the foundation, evidence of water sitting.
Even if they don't agree to pay half, we couldn't even pay for all of it and do it because it's not technically on our property.
We would have to come up with another solution.
Okay. So we're hoping to be able to work together?
Absolutely.
So we're kind of in a holding pattern, it sounds like?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Because this is the best solution, to have part of it, the drain go on town property or off school property?
Well, it can go that way, or it could go the other way, which would be more expensive and undermine the driveway because the other way would be to attach to the drain near Main Road.
So the best solution is?
That way.
Yeah.
That's my thought, and that's Clement Rose's thought.
And what you also have is the way it's built, and you can, you can see it in the second photo when you're looking towards Main Road, there's a slight crest in the roadway, and the water naturally comes, comes towards the field, and then at a point goes towards Main Road. There is work done, we did work, and then the public works came in and put in, I can't think of a swale.
They, they put an asphalt swale channel in, and they put some very large rocks to stop the water.
And what it does is it does move the water from Arbor Terrace.
Right.
It was no different than what we had, it was a different setup. But what happens now is that at the bottom here, it floods and heavy rains because all the water from Arbor Terrace comes flying down there, goes down there to the road.
Oh, so it really would be best to just go right out.
Which, that's, the town did that, so.
I think we should install meters on these roads and measure which water comes from where and fuse a die to see what's happening because that's how things are done in Tiverton.
So.
Why not?
So, back to real solutions. So, so we could at least tentatively say we'd certainly happy to compromise. I mean, we don't need the vote.
Did you get a sense from the council that they were willing to join us in this?
I, I believe that at least several of the councilors right now would have voted for this if it would have came to a vote.
So it seems.
At least, several.
What we're left to do is to decide that it needs to be done, which seems kind of.
Right, definitely.
And that if we shared the cost with the town, there would be $7,000 that we need to find somewhere and approve.
We could take it out of our surplus account, out of our reserve.
You have that right, Mr. Fiore.
Or Doug's got savings on the.
He knows right where it is.
We could, we could, we could pay for the whole thing if we had to. The issue is that the, if we have to go, if we can't work with the town, then we're looking at a more significant cost.
Right.
That we have to entail that we, and again, it goes back to kind of what Mr. Odell said,
we didn't create it.
Right.
And then we could be left with a bigger nut.
Right.
To try to solve.
We keep on ringing the bell, so should we just take a motion to?
Well, first, I'd like to hear from Mr. Aruda.
On a more personal level, as a taxpayer, Mr. Ririck, I really wouldn't want to see the school pay for all of this, especially since the school didn't create it. Personally, as a taxpayer, I would like to see the town pony up at least half, really. I mean, they caused it. They caused it by undermining the school, by undermining the drainage, and now you're going to pay the whole thing? I mean, I understand it because you don't want a more significant problem, and the problem will be worse in a month, in a month, when we're getting rain every other day.
I'm definitely pushing for only paying half.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I definitely agree that we should only pay half.
Absolutely.
But we know we definitely have to do it.
I think it's good faith just doing half because.
But we have to get it done.
The school did not create the situation.
And I do think that, that we have had discussions now with the Recreation Commission, and there is a better understanding now of.
We worked very well with them on the fence.
I think it's important to understand that the.
So hopefully, these kind of issues won't start.
Right. While the complaint may have come from the Rec. Commission originally, I want to make it clear, the Rec. Commission isn't making the decision on this. This is, this is strictly the town administrator who is, it's now in his ball, the ball's in his court from what I just heard, to, to try to work with us, to try to solve this. Again, the Rec., we have worked well with the Rec. Commission lately.
Yes, we have.
But I want to make, I don't, it's not them.
Very good.
I mean, they may have had an issue with the field itself.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is they understand now that they need to talk with us before they start.
And I can't imagine they would have an issue with a pipe that runs behind their concession stand. No one's going to see it, and it's going to alleviate all this problem, and it doesn't impact them at all. I can't even imagine them even having an issue, saying anything about.
Well, so it's really not just in Mr. Goncalo's court, it's in the council's court because Mr. Goncalo works for the council.
True.
So I guess we'll just wait and.
Did he contact you today?
No. See, that was, that was going to be my last question because he was directed to contact you ASAP.
How, how long would it take to get an estimate for this alternative solution going and tying it to the drain?
Tying into the drain in the driveway itself?
Because the, because the final, the final proposition to the taxpayers is, here we are proposing something for $18,000 and requires this permission, or whatever it is, and here is $50,000, and no matter who pays for it, it comes from your pocket.
Exactly. And as a taxpayer, I would like, I would like the most reasonable solution at the most reasonable cost that's guaranteed to solve the problem. He, he's guaranteeing it's going to solve the problem. I mean, it's taking the water out of the driveway, and it's taking it away from the ball field.
Right. So that's best for both, both.
All right, well.
And, and you don't have to cut up the driveway to get it in. It's one small penetration where the drain is going, and in the estimate is using hot patch, not cold patch, using hot patch to patch around the storm drain after it's installed. It's minimally invasive to the driveway, and it's a reasonable solution, and it can be done fairly quickly.
Other kind of problems was getting invariances from the people who.
It's no variances needed.
Yeah, it's just us and the town?
No.
I was just going to say, there shouldn't be a variance on municipal property.
This pipe is going to very closely.
It's on town, probably won't impact it.
In municipal property is generally not a variance requirement.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Odell, for coming to help.
Well, thanks for your time and interest.
Really. We appreciate it.
And showing so much concern for, for the safety of our students.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Aruda?
Well, Mr. Aruda wants to speak. Councilman Aruda. Hello, James Aruda, Chairman of the Town Council. I actually want to first commend the school department for actually willing to step forward and accept the, the idea of paying half the cost. I also believe personally, the school probably should not have to bear any of the cost for this. I will commend you in swallowing probably some past history and stepping forward on the right foot to help solve this problem. I, I am a very firm supporter in solving this problem as soon as possible myself. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can probably gather that other council members besides myself also support this resolution. Let me be very quickly. There was last night a question on the, basically the procedure and process of how to move forward with Mr. Clement Rose's estimation. I guess apparently, a job of this size, there's a question if those will have to go out to RFP or not. And Mr. Odell, to bring up the situation of a possible emergency situation, might be able to avoid prolonging the process for a resolution, since it is now, of course, our rain season in the spring, and of course, you know, that, that war is just going to get worse. Hopefully, we don't have rain from a couple of years ago where it was, it rained for three weeks straight. Hopefully, we don't have that again. I also would like, Mr. Ririck, if you don't mind, a copy of the correspondence that you have, the town administrator. I'd like to see that myself.
Okay.
I would offer my support to you in any way I can give it. So please don't hesitate to contact me. And I would also like to know when, or when you do not get notified by the town administrator, since we did ask him to notify you and to work with you as soon as possible.
So the council won't hear this again until your next.
Meeting.
Meeting.
That's part, that, my.
Which will be April.
April 8th. That might possibly, we won't hear it until April 8th.
Just something that Mr. Aruda and Mr. Odell brought up. I talked to Attorney Robinson today, and he believes that what Mr. Odell stated is correct. If we, we deem it an emergency situation where the work needs to be done in a relatively short period of time for safety reasons, you can waive the bid. You know, he was comfortable, you know, after I explained to him what, you know, how deep the water was and stuff and the extent of the problem. He seemed to say that we could just go to, we could just hire someone to do the work.
Is there any real expectation that the, a bid would come in significantly lower?
It just takes more time to bid.
I was going to say.
I don't believe so because Mr. Rose is giving us the material and cost.
Oh.
And the labor at a reduced rate because he is also a town resident.
Okay.
I would support if we can get around some of the, I guess we'll call it red tape process in getting this resolved, I would support. I'm opposed to this.
And that'll probably be, I would think we asked Mr. Robinson, but that the council would ask Mr. Tykes.
Right.
Probably, yes, yes.
If this would qualify for a no bid.
I mean, I can actually ask some of those questions before our meeting, and get some answers, hopefully, ahead of time, so at least we'll have a direction of where we can go from there.
Well, we're certainly happy to resolve it.
Could you just take a motion-
A motion? Okay.
So we can move forward.
Can I have a motion?
I would move that we commit to sharing half the cost of the bid as put forward by Mr. Rose-
Yes.
Of, so of $7,000, and that Mr. Rurick be designated to work with Mr. Goncalo.
Our share would be seven.
Seven, 125.
Right.
Seven, 125, with Mr. Goncalo to move forward as quickly as reasonable.
Second.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor?
Thank you both.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the pictures.
You've seen it before.
I know, I'm very visual.
Some of many. 2013, 14 budget.
Sally's taught me to keep everything.
Yes, he has his own file.
In your packet, you should, I apologize for the one page, but it's probably one of the most important pages. We have this, the whole PowerPoint online. This is new information. From our last meeting, we talked about the health care savings of the $179,020, and of that, we, the committee voted to put $50,400, which is 70% of the total cost for the School Resource Officer for next year, to help offset those costs. The committee also voted to put $38,918 aside to help offset what we believe is a 5% reduction in federal aid if the sequestration goes through completely. Since our last meeting, we did receive a retirement, we just voted on it, and that saved us $28,314. Al, can you just, I'm sorry to make you go back, but our remote's not working. So what that does is it lowers our overall budget proposal to 2.9%, and it has an impact of 1.98% on our tax levy. And I'll just, can you go to the two slides, it should be? Go one, yeah, right there. These are the updated numbers with the retirement. As you can see, we're at 2.9%. The state aid number hasn't changed, so our total dollar amount that we're asking for is $28,729,425. So that's where we are as of tonight.
So the Budget Committee does not have the 28-
They will get this tomorrow morning.
After we vote on it.
After you vote to accept it. Just officially, so-
Well, yeah.
We can move it forward. But we did get one retirement. There's a couple that might come in, but as of right now, we can only go with what we know.
So you just need a motion to send-
To approve the new number.
The additional savings of 28,314.
Right, to approve the new number, 28,729,425.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 28,729,425, which includes additional savings of $28,314 due to a retirement. One second.
And again, if you, and it's an important number, if you look at our total dollar increase, we're asking for 800, just over $800,000, just a hair over. Again, if we had gone to the cap, it would have been 1.2 million. So we're well below the cap, and I think we've done a good job of presenting a very reasonable budget to the Budget Committee.
Well, and again, I think, what is it, half of that, Doug, is in that services line, which is the-
Special ed.
Special ed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the med school tuition.
And the med school tuition is a big, a big chunk this year, because again, as the state redid the state, when they implemented the state aid formula, they said that the med school would now be, you'd have to pay for your kids to go there.
So although we get a little more state aid, we also get an additional bill that we didn't have in the past.
And how many students go there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
What line number is that on this?
Services?
Actually, the handout is just our actual numbers for the current fiscal year through February, so those numbers are reflected on there.
That's a current, that's an update.
Oh, yeah, this is FY13 versus FY14, this handout.
So, if we could-
What is the total med school tuition then?
It's 100. It's 100,000.
Have those numbers remained fairly constant, the number of students?
Again, because the med school is an independent entity, they, we have not had the best lines of communication with them, because we have students that lead the eighth grade, and we have to track down where they go, because they're not on our, they're on our rosters in some cases in the ninth grade, and they're not here in September.
They go to the med school.
And they don't show up here, and so we have to go, we have to contact them and say, do you have this, you know, this child, this child, or this child, or did they move out of district?
Right.
And we usually, that's how we find-
They don't come looking for their money?
Oh, they, that's another way, how we find out, too.
Yeah, that's how we-
When we get our quarterly bill.
It's 88,000 in the 2014 budget. And the process, according to the state legislation, we're increasing 20% a year, so we started with not having any bills the first year, which was, two years ago, we paid 20% of the tuition. This year, we're at 40, 2014, we're at 60, so it'll eventually go up to 100% of the tuition.
Oh, it's going to go up to 100, yeah.
And what, the philosophy, again, when they redid the funding formula, of having us where we weren't paying for the med, and now we are?
Similar to, to be equitable, Davies Vocational-
Yeah.
-used to be free for all the sending districts.
And now they pay-
Now they have to pay a tuition, so when they created the, trying to go back, when they, to create equity, they gave here and took there.
One of the components of the funding formula is to include the tuition for these students, so they supposedly included it and then charged us for it, so they gave it and took it away.
Oh, that's our usual trick, right? Yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
It is, it's really-
So they gave it to us, so that we could-
In theory, but some of the districts that have a state, you know, they still get the med.
We still lucked out, because we got an extra $79,000.
So like a Davies, all of their funding comes from-
It used to be, it used to be free.
The public schools that use them.
Directly from the state.
It used to be from the state.
The schools didn't have their tuition.
But now it comes from the districts.
Yes.
So they don't take anyone that's not in the district? I mean, because it's, it's like a charter school.
It's a, Davies is similar to Newport, the Career Center.
Certain districts are assigned to-
Certain districts can go there. Providence was one of them. What's that? Rogers is ours. It's Newport County.
Now, how's, like a Davies or a med, how is their increase controlled or calculated?
Their local school board.
Should be per pupil cost.
Okay.
And each community is billed based on their per pupil cost, so that's our-
So they have, like us, they have a board who-
Their per pupil cost is less than Rogers.
Rogers is higher.
Right.
Because of the formula they use.
Yeah.
But they essentially have a school board that decides what their increase, I mean, who builds their budget.
And indirectly, we get that through our per pupil cost, but really, we, almost regardless of what their budget is, we're going to get a bill now based on our per pupil, so it really doesn't matter what their budget is from our perspective, from being billed.
It's our per pupil cost that we pay?
Yeah, so it's kind of, you see an invoice, and there's, you know, 30 different communities with different rates on it.
Right, goes by hours.
Because it's based upon the district.
Because Newport gets their rate, Middletown gets their rate, Portsmouth would get their rate.
Now, what is Rogers up to now with the per pupil?
Depends on the placement.
That would be one more complicated, because each student is based on the number of classes that-
Full-time-
Sometimes full-time.
Full-time, significantly more expensive than the part-time.
I mean, the line item in our budget total is 286,000, 88 is the med, so basically we're at 190,000 for Rogers tuition.
Which is pretty flat.
Our enrollment's been pretty stable there.
It hasn't gone up.
Went down a little bit.
And there's, just so people don't misunderstand, those are terrific opportunities.
Oh, they are, they are, they're wonderful.
We're not questioning that, and I'm just trying to understand how the funding works.
Right, yeah, and so if we were just paying per pupil costs to the med school, but not-
To the Career Center, that's correct.
Rogers bills us based on their-
Does the state, Ride has a separate formula for the Career Centers that-
Right.
-districts have to follow.
Because their state schools-
Then there's a, then there's a formula for the charter schools, the med school, is a charter school, so there's a different formula for that, which is less than what Roger, I don't want to say Rogers, is what the formula says we have to pay.
But eventually, that's going to become the per pupil cost of the district?
Or a derivative of it.
A derivative of it. We believe it, probably.
A derivative of it, okay, so calculus.
You'd have to study some more.
That's what derivatives are in my mind.
Maybe it's a kneecap question.
But theoretically, if the cost of educating that individual student were more than the per pupil cost, it would be a savings. If it's, if it were less for that individual student, it would be a cost, but it should be a little watch.
And as a charter school, then, the state is monitoring kneecap scores for the med?
Sure. They get published.
And would, I assume, if they did not perform up to standard, there would be ramifications?
I'm not familiar with how Ride handles charter schools that don't meet the standards. No, I don't, I don't know the-
I want to be reassured that our students are getting a good education-
I don't know enough about it.
And performing well, for our money.
I don't know enough about it, to answer your question. I would like to think that-
They're evaluated, and the charter's involved.
Yeah, I think they are.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of charter schools that don't do nearly as well as the public schools do, so I'm not quite sure how they're ranked.
And vice versa.
Well, the public schools do better than most of the charters. That's online. That's a, that's a hard fact.
Okay, we all set with that?
So we need a vote.
Just a vote.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, and we're looking for the vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so you'll send that on, right?
I will send it tomorrow.
To the Budget Committee, because they're going to meet tomorrow night?
Yes.
If anyone wants to go at 7:30.
I'll send it to Mrs. Epp.
And Thursday night also. Wastewater treatment?
There's, there's no update. We're still waiting to schedule the meetings.
Okay.
Waiting to hear from the Water Board and from the Rec. Commission.
So we have the proposed legislation?
Oh, yes.
We sent copies of the bills?
Right, one of them was the bill submitted by Representative Canario in an effort to get some sort of control on the increases in our out-of-district placements. I understand at this point that it's been referred to committee, and it's not likely to move this year. I would like to have a chance to talk to Rep. Canario about the language. I had had discussions with Representative Edwards, I never spoke directly to Representative Canario.
Okay.
And I was interested in knowing if there had been any research done into what neighboring states do to control these costs, and so at this point-
You want to wait till you speak to him?
I don't want to take any action.
Okay.
But I will have those discussions and see what we can do to move this forward, possibly next year, and maybe in a slightly different form.
And the most important thing is, we have to emphasize, we're still going to, of course, provide the services, and we want to, it wasn't anything to do with that.
Nope.
It was just to keep, try to keep the cost under the cap. Okay, and now the next one?
No, what else do we have?
Binding arbitration, it was the copy of it?
This is binding arbitration.
It was in the last packet, and now we've got it for them again. Mr. Burgundy, you want to speak about that?
Oh, that's why, that's why I have two.
Yeah, that's why I have two the same, because it was in the last packet.
It was in the last packet, but we sent it again, just in case you couldn't find it. It wasn't in your files, or your binder.
This is pretty much, this is the next version of the same thing, which is the binding arbitration bill, basically, after mediation, arbitration, and-
Fabulous.
The decisions of the arbitration panel are binding, including these money matters.
You can look at the-
Do we have a resolve? No, we usually have a resolve written out?
No, we don't have a resolve.
Mrs. Black just asked.
We were just going to discuss it, and if we approved it, we could write a resolve.
We had a resolve before.
Yeah, I think we re-bring that resolve back, and-
That's what we could do.
Because it doesn't look any different than what they had before.
That's what I mean, but we just wanted to make sure, and-
If we vote on it, that we are simply opposed to it, then we can also vote on sending the old resolve and just changing the bill number, and, because the reasons are all the same.
It would be the same reasons.
Well, why, well, let's, I prefer to, I mean-
You want to do one?
Just me, I'd prefer to just do it all at once.
Okay.
I mean, bring the resolve forward, put the-
By the time, this might be all-
I think if you took a vote, we can then forward the vote to our elected officials-
At least the vote.
And then the resolve can come.
We're just going to have a piece of paper with a vote that says we opposed 2013 H534?
At least initially, in case it gets heard before-
Right, then we can do the resolve.
Then you can do the resolve, but at least we can do an official letter or something.
Well, we usually list the reasons.
We usually list the reasons. Did you see the summary on the back?
Like in the bill here, when you see in the front of the bill-
Right, it's more for it, we would list the reasons.
I understand.
How about if we, would if we-
Sorry, I say a flowery language, but-
Right, you have the resolve from last time, right?
Yeah.
So can't we just reaffirm that resolve with, and task the, either the chair or the superintendent with simply inserting the new bill number?
That's what I said.
That's what Jan was referring to.
Okay, so it's exactly the same language, they just changed the number? Pretty much, I went back and looked, yeah.
Just the bill number?
They just changed the bill number.
Yeah. I just wanted to be able to see the language.
If we already voted on that resolve, so that would hold for this one.
So we make a motion, Mr. Rurick, to send that up?
I'll make a motion to oppose to the bill H5340 concerning binding arbitration.
Do I have a second? Any questions? And we'll have Mr. Rurick send that up?
Yeah, just put together the resolve that we had before, insert the new bill, and Mrs. Black can sign it.
I can sign it, okay?
Yep.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. That's good. Home teaching approval?
Yes, I'm requesting the school committee approve the home teaching request that's before you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation and approve the home teaching request.
Could we show them how lovely our schools are? Okay, all those in favor? We did the Pecassett School, now School Resource Officer, I'll have to accuse myself, and Mrs. Ferman will take over.
Yes, you have a, I've spoken to Chief Blakey, actually, we talked back in the fall, prior to the incident at Newtown, about the possibility of trying to bring the School Resource Officer back at some point during this school year, and I said we needed to get together and make a proposal to the school committee to see if we could find some funds to help offset the costs. Obviously, the situation in Newtown kind of accelerated those discussions, and the chief, you know, without any, I didn't make the request, he did it on his own. We've had a School Resource Officer assigned to the schools since the Newtown tragedy. The chief, however, in order to make it work, as you can see by the overtime, the request, has to pay overtime in order to fill his other shifts. the request, has to pay overtime in order to fill his other shifts. So he asked, he asked me what I thought, and I said, put the request in writing, and I'd be happy to bring it before the committee and for your consideration, to see if we could possibly help out. It is, you know, with the costs associated, we are benefiting from the school resource officer being in the schools. It, I think it'd be along the same lines we agreed to pay for seventy percent of the position for next year. I would recommend that we, we consider paying part of his, or if not all.
And he's looking for only April and May, so he's gonna cover March, he's gonna cover June, and he really just wants help for a couple months.
I believe, you know, from talking to him and the letters, it's back and forth, I believe it's for the rest, it will cover his costs for the rest of the school year, you know, help. So I said, again, I'd bring it before you for your consideration.
And, and this would be a one-time cost, because moving forward, we have built into our budget-
Right, that's correct.
-the school resource officer. So it would be something that we can reasonably take from reserves as a one-time only-
We can find the money for it.
Occurrence.
All right. I'll move to approve.
The total, or?
Eighty-six hundred?
Second.
Discussion.
So is, is that your recommendation?
That's my recommendation that we pay.
No further discussion, then we'll take the vote. All in favor?
Thank you.
Four, zero. Mrs. Black having accused.
And again, I just wanna reiterate for those folks at home, the police, working with the chief, we've worked very closely together, and he's been very easy to work with in improving our, our security in our schools, so.
And I appreciate that he put the safety of our students first, and then-
Absolutely.
-came to us to see if we could help with the money.
And he did it, right, and he did it knowing that-
But the safety was gonna come first.
And he did it not expecting anything, so I just felt it was the right thing to do, to help, since they were helping us. Excuse me.
Okay, reports and announcements?
Quickly, Mrs. Black, I had a couple of quick announcements. I, the Committee has in front of them the year-to-date financials through February. Overall, we're doing very well versus the budget. I don't have any concerns with, with that. There's a couple of line items, though, that probably they're commenting on. One is our regular overtime is, is over budget for the year, predominantly as a result of, of the storms. We've had our custodians come in quite extensively over weekends to make sure the schools are ready for, for Monday morning. But I anticipate savings and a couple of our expense line items, because we, we've frozen our spending as of about six weeks ago, so I think that should be able to cover any, any overtime that we've incurred, or even through the last few weeks, actually, we've had a couple more weeks of overtime expenses, but I don't think that's gonna pose a problem overall. And the only other thing that really stands out as unusual, this part of the end of the report, there's a building improvement line. That's where we've accumulated a lot of the Committee-approved expenditures that are coming out of our, out of our reserves. They kind of have to flow through the expenditure sheet, so we see, we have a balance that's over budget there. Don't be alarmed, it's basically just where we're accumulating the cost of our, of our one-time expenditures.
It's sort of a placeholder for now?
Correct.
Because we know we have to account for it either through savings or-
And speaking of repairs, the, a lot of the equipment for the seats for the auditorium have arrived, and we, our plan is to have them up and installed by May first.
So they'll be there for the meeting?
They will be here for the FTR public meeting, so.
They won't have to sit on the cone.
And for all the spring concerts, absolutely, and for our awards night in June.
That's wonderful.
Doug, why, why again, is, is none of the one-twenty-seven, nine-twenty-two stipend five-one-four-oh-three spent? Because he gets that at the, that he collects that at the end of the year? First page, stipend, athletic director?
Those come in batches, but usually based on the seasonality of when they're paid.
So they just sort of submit them all at, woo, at the end?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda surprised the fall ones aren't in there. I'm gonna have to check into that. They may have-
Well, that's why I said, I know we've had some of the-
Got in charge of the regular salary.
Ball, basketball.
They could have been charged the salary.
And then they'll have to be reclassified.
Okay.
But I'm sure the coaches, if they hadn't gotten paid, would have.
Well, and that's why I'm wondering why it was zero.
It was probably-
Because if we're paying them, I would have certainly expected to have seen amounts.
No, that's a good question. I can make sure that-
We pay our employees.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Let me just give them a minute, let me look at everything else.
Mr. Verrick?
I'll side just the chairs with a bic.
I had one more positive announcement to make. The Rhode Island Tropical Trust, who we use for our property and liability insurance, has a, a grant each year, and we apply for it every year, and maybe one out of every two or three years, they award a grant for us that's safety-related. So we were the recipient of a thousand-dollar grant based on our application, which is, was to improve the fence around the water-retention area at Fort Barton. Right now-
The rain garden.
A temporary fence that's been there since the construction of the school. So right now, we're getting some bids on, on how much it's gonna cost in total, but we do have a thousand-dollar grant from the trust to help to bring our costs there. So I thank the trust for that.
And can you tell me about the fence? How's it gonna be? What's it gonna look like?
Be three foot, four foot high.
It's gonna match the, the fence on the perimeter of the school, so it's gonna be vinyl-covered chain-link fence, probably.
Oh, that's gonna be nice, yeah. Okay.
Can, can I just ask, too, the professional development in the curriculum? We've hardly spent any.
What happens is, a lot of times, that'll either get charged to a grant, and we'll have to adjust at the end of the year, or have you do have a lot of backlog of expenses that are coming through this year?
We do have some things coming up that we'll be spending on as well, but we try to use all of the grant funds first.
Ms. Pauls, didn't you have something about the jazz band?
Nope, I announced that last time.
That was last time.
Oh, okay, all right.
I, I did have a request, though.
Doing a lot of extra practicing in preparation for their competition on the cruise to Bermuda.
That's right.
Um-
We did have several of our students at the Rhode Island Music Educators Association's Allstate on Sunday.
Well, that's what I meant, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, no, they were great. No, they did a really good job.
The Allstate, and that was in Warwick?
Yep, there was, no, that was in Providence at the Vet.
Providence, the Vets, oh, that's wonderful.
So they did a great job. I did have a request, though. I, scheduling-wise, I don't know how the rest of the Committee feels, but I have a lot of questions. I would imagine parents have a lot of questions about the testing, both kneecap and park. I would like to see us dedicate a whole meeting-
Sure.
-to understanding what it is, discussing it, discussing what we're doing, what we're going to be doing.
That would be good.
And, yes, how many hours are involved for the different grade levels?
Right.
And all the interim assessments, and some are optional, and which one?
And I know you had mentioned you had questions about, last time you didn't get to ask them about the process for the juniors, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so, yeah, one of the, at least a couple of the presentations we've been to from Ride at Rhode Island Association of School Committees has implied that they get very, we're gonna get very detailed, or the schools are gonna get very detailed information about the students that are at risk of not graduating, and sort of wanted to know what the specific plans are, you know, how specific they are, based on that information, how specific that information is, and, you know, what are, what are the Plan Bs for each, each of the students, so.
So I don't know, what do we have for, like, our April meeting? Or do we wanna do it on a Saturday, so people can come? I don't, you know, what, what are people thinking?
Your second meeting's usually, well, I'm trying to think. I don't think we'll have, cross our fingers, I don't think we'll have a budget issue with the Budget Committee at least, so the second meeting in April?
Yeah, that would be good.
We can do it then, whenever you want.
There's a lot of questions.
It may be an opportunity for, you know, I know there are juniors who are at risk, you know, those parents specifically may want to, you know, may want to make sure that we publicize that to the-
Mm-hmm, right.
So are we thinking on, on a regular, just regular Tuesday night? So you're thinking, you're thinking the twenty-third?
Yeah.
That would be good, that's a good idea. A lot of questions out there.
So that'll be our-
And Mr. Fizette will be here to tell us everything he's doing.
Testing night.
Yeah, there'll be, there's a lot, this-
That's all it'll be.
It's quite the topic, and-
There's enormous amount of information out in the media, some of it-
Not right.
Seems to be not correct, and some of it seems to be-
That's correct. Yeah, I read a couple stories that were not necessarily as accurate as they should have been.
You know, I'll make one prediction, which is it's only gonna get more politicized, so we might as well get prepared for that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I've been doing my own reading, too, and now just have lots of questions about some of the reading I, I have.
And again, some of the, and I think it's important that we give the best information we have.
Right.
And I, and unfortunately, and I, and I hate saying this, because I believe we control our own destiny, but a lot of this is, you know-
And that's, I think that's one of the things we have to understand, is, you know, what are the carrots and what are the sticks?
And we do our best, and we'll be doing, and Steve will be talking about it at the night, but we'd be doing quite a bit to notify those children, the parents.
It changes weekly, and the support has to be there.
You can also request someone from Ride to be here for that meeting, and they can simply, they can offer this-
Yeah, they wanna send someone.
To answer a question.
I think, I think it's best that we talk first.
Yeah.
Right, to our parents.
That we talk to our parents first, and gather, like, group questions, and then we can invite someone. I think it's better that way.
It's kneecap, but park as well.
But park is, because it just kind of dovetails into park.
And could we have, I know the administrators, but certainly invite the third and fourth grade teachers who have now been through these interims to share some of their experiences?
Well, the high school teachers have been through them, too.
Oh, okay. I, it wasn't just third and fourth grade?
No.
Well, there you go. See, that would have been one of my questions. So, yeah, so we could just sort of share information.
And the whole issue of interims is one that we will need to address in the, in the very short term.
Well, that's why, let's start understanding what we're doing, understanding the, the issues, both kneecap and parks, and we can start moving-
No, no question.
And most importantly, the support that we're gonna be giving.
Well, I'm, you know, the support that we'd be giving those, those juniors, because that's the most immediate priority, I believe is quite significant. You know, we've been talking about things such as mandatory summer school for, for students who get a one, especially at the, maybe from a certain grade level on. I mean, as administrators, we've talked about it.
You don't wanna start juniors.
To simply say, you have to go, you know, to some sort of remediate. We haven't fleshed it out yet.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, you know, those are the types of things that, because things are, because it's becoming such a high-stakes proposition, contrary to what some folks will say. I believe it's when you say your graduation depends on it, it's high stakes. We need to do everything possible to remediate kids as early as possible to, to get them ready, you know, not just in your sophomore year or your junior year.
Right, that's right.
We can talk about that on the-
Well, right, and then, as I said, it's not that it's just the juniors, we're now talking about third through eleven, every single year.
No, no, we're talking, right, we're talking the entire spectrum.
I, I, you know, I wanna get my hands around the park, too.
Okay, that'll be good. So-
And if you have any questions ahead of time, to let us know, and then we can, no, well, we can, we can provide some of the data that, you know, because there's, there is a ton out there, so narrowing it down to-
That's exactly it. There is a ton of data, there's a lot of-